All right. I've got six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you for all being here tonight. We do have a guest, Mr. Tyler Bush is here with us tonight. Thank you. With that, we'll move right along to correspondence and public participation. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted when that item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit views in written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting, and those comments will be brought to the attention of the board during the meeting. Do we have any correspondence or public participation?
I have one. You have a gift that we wanted to give you, me, the office ladies here for Christmas, so thank you for everything you do. That was from us, so thanks again. It's a lot of work, you know, a lot of time, and appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. With that, we'll put right into new business. 4.01 is our information purposes only. 4.02, Mr. O.
Don't call me. My computer's not working. Sorry. I have a friend. I'll phone a friend on this one. Okay. So I've got some recommendations for hire. Let's see, Christine Ortega, Courtney Small, Deborah Scherr, Alicia Bigman as district subs for the 24-25 school year. What do you recommend?
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the following district substitutes for the 24-25 school year. Christina Ortega, Courtney Small, Deborah Scherr, and Alicia Bigman.
Second.
I got a tip on that.
I should have.
I know. She's one minute.
Feel sorry. Well, I'll give you the next one. Okay, I have a motion and second. Any public comment on that agenda item? Any further board? Wade, aye. Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
4.03 classified. Mr. O, you're up again.
I know. Is it down? Oh, there it is. Okay. All right. One more recommendation. I believe she's here tonight recommending Stephanie Scarber for the SLPA position.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves classified hire of Stephanie Scarber as Colster Public Schools SLPA for the 24-25 school year.
Okay.
Can I have a motion and a second? Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board?
I'm excited that we filled out the spots.
Yes.
Thanks.
Very good. Wade, aye. Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Extracurricular. That would usually be Mr. DuSoul, but.
I can go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, okay. So we'd like to recommend for hire Dan Valdez?
Valdez.
Valdez. Okay. As the CHS Assistant Wrestling Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves extracurricular hire of Dan Valdez as CHS Assistant Wrestling Coach for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Nice to see Dan back in there. Great. With that, Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Ready for me again? Okay. One more extracurricular. We'd like to recommend for hire Jeremy Kill's Knight as the FBMS Assistant Boys Basketball Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the extracurricular hire of Jeremy Kill's Knight as FBMS Assistant Boys Basketball Coach for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Can I have a motion and a second? Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Perfect. Very well. And that moves us into 4.05, what we're all here for.
You can go ahead and fill that up. I've got me.
Oh, yep.
I want to have a line of arms. So as we talked about, we talked about this list of capital projects as we're calling it, and on my take of on the maintenance for maintenance list, the TAB capital projects shows, now it shows all of the items and then a year space associated with them. And I just wanted to go through this. I talked to Mr. Bush about these projects a little bit and kind of went through what I envisioned, which is to have a 20-year horizon and kind of assign a year to each one of these projects so that he can take this back and begin design work on whichever ones we choose for year one, and then look at just costing for items that don't need design work. So that's kind of where we're at. And if you have any input on these, I've got kind of a little bit of a list of which one I think should be, you know, year one type of projects, and then we can go from there. So we did, Steve and I did meet with Brady Culbert about the electrical and lighting for all three schools. And when we met with him, his biggest, I guess, his number one project was the switchboard here because the switchboard here, if we lose that, we lose the potential of having other schools come into here if there's something else that goes on in other schools. And so the switchboard was number one on his list. And so I would put that as a year one project, and he also gave us quotes on those. And all of his projects that came out to be about a million dollars is what it came out to be for the electrical and lighting improvements that he recommended. So the switchboard, excuse me, for the high school was right around $400,000, just under $400,000. And then also the backup generator for the high school so that we have a place for the high school plus if there's, you know, another school that has issues. That came in at about $135,000. So that's, those two, I would say, are number ones for, and I would say, year one, year two for CHS. Just, I mean, you know.
Just to add to that.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Having that conversation with Brady, that's probably the most important thing because if we lose anything at the middle school, we can at least bring the middle school kids up here, right? We're not missing school. Same thing with elementary. They can come up here. We have the room for them to continue that. Our growth, our need for electricity is not diminishing by any means. In fact, it's growing. And thankful, thank you, Brady, for coming in because he's got some concerns, real concerns. We broke that pipe last year.
Yep.
Yeah, that was pretty eye-opening for these guys.
I didn't see you sitting there.
I was told it's the year.
So I agree. That's going to be one that's going to be, I think it's going to be year one, year two later.
Yeah. So that's year one, year two. The next one, so there is another Colster High School, the gym lighting that I think can go a little bit further down the list, but.
How much was that one for?
The lighting is about $70,000, $70,000, yeah.
Okay.
The next would be the Pine Butte MCC replacement, which I would imagine would be, I mean, year one to year five, somewhere in there. It's not immediate, and if we lost power over there, we can bring kids here. So it's not as immediate as the high school stuff. So, I don't know. I mean.
How much is that one?
That one is right at about $290,000.
Okay. So are we wanting to do like year by year for 20 years? Or are we going to do like years one through five, years six through 10? What do you see?
And this is what I just talked to Tyler about this a little bit. I think that having, assigning a year to that project, and maybe it's year one, year five, I mean, I'm okay with that. But I think that having those years assigned will allow us to say, okay, as far as the bond we go out for, we're going to need this much upfront, and we're going to need this much, you know, on the tail end because the tail end is going to be a lot less than upfront. So, and, you know, that's kind of, kind of the way I see it is putting years on it so that we can get kind of that curve of how much we actually need and in which years. So, but I'm, I mean, I'm okay with years one through five. I mean, what's your thoughts, Tyler?
I guess my conversation was just if you allot a certain amount per year that you can, you know, that corresponds with, you know, going out to the public for the vote and saying, hey, we're going to have, you know, $1.5 million every year or every other year. And so then that fits in, and some of these may be a lower priority, but it's budgeted for it and fits into budgeted amount for that amount, and just getting it done.
Okay.
So if you're feeling, you know, if you think of it as a linear, you know, progression with a bar chart, and you have a certain amount per year that you need to be underneath that curve, then you can allot those amounts.
Yeah. Okay. And I, I think year one, year two is just, I mean, it's just going to be expensive.
Absolutely.
If we're talking about the sports complex and especially. So not sure exactly, and maybe, Brittany, how would that look as far as a bond goes? I mean, is there, is there a way to actually ask for more upfront and then taper it off?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I think you get it all upfront, whatever you ask for.
Okay.
So.
And then we can, as a district, can delegate and rule on all those funds.
Well, according to how you put it on the ballot.
Right.
Yeah.
So if you did say the lighting, I'm just going to round up the 1.5 for lighting and electrical, electrical, just called that. And then again, I'm just throwing a number out there, 10 for the track field complex, everything, right? We load that up front. Tyler knows what he's got to work with. This is where we're going. And then, because some of these projects might, you know, like an elevator, well, we have some funds. We have a contractor here in town. He can fix it right now. We might be able to just go ahead and get that, not these down. So I don't, we go for the 20-year bond, but I know anticipate it taking 20 years to do a lot of these things. Not saying that other things might come up, but.
So when they do a bond, it says 20 years because it's spread out over 20 years for the taxpayers to pay that, right?
Right, yeah.
So who gives us the money right up front?
I think, well, I think it's whoever we are, I don't know a whole lot about them still.
Financing for or something?
But DA Davidson is who I reached out to, to talk to. So that is who we would be working with.
And can schools invest the money that they're not using in year one, two, and make some interest off of that? Are we allowed to do that?
I'm not sure on that. I can find out.
I don't think so.
I would just have to sit in there.
Especially since it's ultimately taxpayers' money.
Mm-hmm. But I'm just thinking if we have inflation for some of these later projects, it'd be nice to have some of that. But I'm sure there's a rule against it.
There's, I guess, my thoughts are too, there's two different versions. There's one is a bond that's typically associated with one big project, and all that money comes in upfront, then you execute that construction, you know, you pay out from that front loaded money to the contractor over the duration of that construction project. The other one is that you're saying, hey, there's a general mill levy, and we're going to take this many mills over a time period. But that isn't financed through the state, that's financed through the taxpayer.
And with that one, it has to be passed every single year.
Yeah.
So we were hoping to present this to the taxpayers and just say, like, this is our 20-year longevity plan for the buildings, and we want your approval right now because right now is a really great time to ask for that.
Right. We still have 90% of our tax, yeah.
Coming from the plan.
Plan in mind.
And there's a big tax break coming through, I believe, so it wouldn't, it would ease the burden on the taxpayers if we did it quickly. So that's kind of where we were thinking.
So.
I guess, the last one. The risk associated with is that there's a payback. So it's, think of it as in terms of a loan, right? So a private company is loaning you the money, and then it's a, you know, it's a public entity, so they have security, and they're going to make money on that. So they have, you know, say it's $7 million, $10 million, whatever the amount is, the school district has that 15-year period to pay that back over time. And so as a percentage, you know, of that payback, you know, it's spread across the entire, you know, the area. So obviously, the, you know, the mine or the plant are paying a large portion of that. If something happens within that 15-year time period, and then that percentage is now distributed across the individual taxpayer. So if you feel confident that in the first five years, you know, there's not going to be any modifications, you know, then the impact on a $100,000 owner is, you know, $100 or whatever that is, if that tax base changes, then that burden in year six through 10, if something would happen, all of a sudden goes from $100 a year to whatever the amount is. So those are just the considerations.
Right. And I think that's where we were considering that. I think our first five, for sure, I don't have any worries on that. I think we're going to have that.
Well, I mean, I think we probably just need to know more about how you can structure that bond, so that's something to look into.
I know Britt's working on that as hard as she can, which she can too. And then the rest of it, Tyler, is basically, here's your margin of response.
Yeah.
What's it going to cost us? What do we got to do? What are we going after as far as amount?
So thinking, I mean, going through the rest of these quotes and then going through the rest of these items. So we've got the MCC over at the elementary school, which again, I mean, I would say year one to five would be, and I would say even later, five would be where I prioritize The FBMS original section lighting upgrade, that part I would put in that, you know, year five as well.
How much is that one?
That one is about $120,000. And then, let's see, so the high school gym lighting, we talked about that one. So, okay. Those are those ones. So if we go down through the list that's up on the board, you know, I think that year one, if we were talking about year one, I would, I would say the design work at least for the public bathroom, and maybe even the work for the public bathroom at high school is year one. Looking down the sports bikes, that design work, and hopefully, you know, breaking ground on that would be year one as well. Other than that, the data hub, moving that from the middle school to the high school would be year one, year two. And then, oh, the bus drop-off and employee parking at Pine Butte Elementary, that whole system there would be year one, year two. Those really are the, kind of the ones that I see as year one, year two. Frank Bratton, I believe that the boiler is maybe year three to five, you know, that's probably the biggest emergency at Frank Bratton. But again, we want to make the high school livable for anybody if something should ever happen at these other schools. So I really think that putting the money here and then, you know, working out from there is the way we should go.
Not only that, but that's kind of where, that's kind of the way the community wanted it to from that meeting.
So looking down through these other items, I would think that really any of these other items are years five through 10, or even 10 through 15, and, you know, they're not emergency type of projects. You know, the paving over at Frank Bratton, I think, is, you know, very important. And so I think that's got to be in the five to 10 year, if not sooner, you know, just depending on how we structure, how we can structure that bond, that bond money. But other than that, I mean, if nobody has any other heartburn about the other projects, you know, we can just meet with Tyler and just go through and assign. The other one is that cafeteria expansion at Pine Butte Elementary for the safety concerns. I think there's an opportunity to actually kind of mitigate that for the short term and then move that project forward, so. It would be pretty small dollars. Does everyone kind of agree with that part, though, with the list? And what those priorities, I mean, the biggest priority and then kind of the second priority, and then everything else kind of flows after that?
Yeah, I think that looks good. Thanks for doing all that.
Yep. Go ahead.
The boiler project at the middle school. I could not catch up on that, but isn't it, putting that included in if it breaks down, it's like the school shuts down?
It is, and that's why we, that's why we want to get this to where if we need to house them here, we can, and then do that project so that, you know, because that project's a pretty decent-sized project because we're going to actually move, I mean, proposed anyways, move that boiler to the new portion of the school, at least one of the boilers, so we can, you know, keep that in a place where it's not open to the atmosphere, I guess.
Good. I just remember it'd be a really costly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's a lot down there, unfortunately.
I want to, I'd like to, I think it's, I think all of this is good. I think that we also, though, should concentrate on all three schools, not just one.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that there are taxpayers that their kids go to, you know.
Yep.
All three of them. So I would like to see all three of the schools get something done every, you know, every time we're doing a project.
We were cautious on that, keeping everybody involved, all facilities involved. But like Wade said, this has got to be priority one in case something happens with those other schools. We can get those kids here. We don't lose days, so. And we still have all those triggers in place that could move.
Yep.
Anyway. So, and that could affect things down the road as well. So we need to concentrate on here first, get this ready, and then we can start working on those other ones.
And really, I think, you know, the, whatever we send out to the taxpayers, I think we'll be able to assign this and say, you know, this project is at the high school, but it is for all three schools because if something were to happen there, we would be able to house them here. And so it does benefit the elementary and the middle school, even though it's not a project done at that school, so.
I love it. Thanks, Wade. Thanks, Steve. Tyler. Brady.
Because I saw that he was here.
No, I appreciate all the time you guys put into this because I think we really, really need to do it. And, you know, every year we talk about one thing, one major thing, and then it just seems too daunting, so then kind of move on to something else that we talk about. And so getting a list and just start checking things off is going to be great.
Yeah.
Well, I think the community's about it, too. It's time.
Yeah.
This should have been done 10 years ago, it wasn't. It's fallen on us to move, so we're moving.
Yeah.
Well, I can see that this is, I mean, it's going to be quite a few, you know, visits with Tyler between either Tyler and the administrator or Tyler and us, and just kind of going through and actually parsing out these projects and saying, okay, what do you actually want done? What's, you know, what's the possibility? It's those types of things. And so I imagine there'll be quite a bit of back and forth, and hopefully we can get things to the point, and I would, I would imagine, you know, if it's possible, we'd like to get, we'd like to get that bond out there as soon as possible, of course, that in front of the taxpayers. And so, you know, if you can give us kind of a, I mean, not tonight, but if you can give us kind of a, all right, I think I can have this one, you know, designed out or this one costed out by March or by May, just to give us an idea of when we can expect to actually go out and put this to the taxpayers.
So some of these, you know, still needs some scope definition.
Yep.
So, you know, it says like a sidewalk, place currency net.
Mm-hmm.
Is that just at the front entrance of the high school? Is that from 10 feet from this? I mean, if you get quantities and you have some sort of scope definition, it's easy to get a price associated with it. But I don't know if that means replace every linear foot of sidewalk or just curves or...
And I think, I mean, that'll just have to be, if you can go through that list and point out the ones that you need more information on, then, you know, either we can work with Robert on that, or if you're somewhere in the area, we can go over and take a look at this.
Sure.
And work with the administrator and, you know, and then actually.
Is Robert the most educated as far as the description of these items? Or is this, these are just pulled off of that deferred maintenance Excel spreadsheet? Or Mr. O, do you mean to walk with Mr. Otrumba? Do you mean, I can make an appointment, I can be here, you know, and just say, hey, we're going to walk, we're going to walk these items down just so I have a better understanding?
Mm-hmm. That would probably be the best way to do it, to be honest. And then we could, you could probably get Mr. Otrumba, Robert, the administrator at that facility we might be at.
Sure.
Wade and myself, we could get all, you know, everybody there, and that scope would be a lot. If we got to have CEI involved, we can get them involved, then we can really draw up our scopes, which would make your life a lot easier.
Right. Because I, I mean, we can be here, you know, next week and put up an appointment for each administrator and say, hey, we'll be at Frank Bratton, you know, at nine o'clock on Tuesday. Be it, you know, on Wednesday, we'll be at the high school, on Thursday, we'll be, you know, Pine Butte. Kind of go from there. If that, whatever's mutually agreeable or whatever's convenient for the schedule.
I will discuss this with Mr. O, and we'll get something out to you.
Okay, perfect.
But then, I think we can probably get something out by the end of the week.
Yeah. Any other questions you had, Tyler, on any of these?
The more, the more scope definition I can get, then I understand, and then kind of the dollar amounts and kind of look at what you're looking to do.
That's all.
And we were looking, Brittany and I were looking at dates for how long it takes to call for that levy election, and it was like 90 days, wasn't it? We have to have 90 days. We have to have 90 days because there, you have to go through certain notices in certain times before you can have it. So it's probably going, well, it's definitely going to be after the May election at this point. So we need to decide how far after we want to do it. Maybe right before school starts in August. Try to shoot for that. But if we take that date that we want to run it by and kind of work backwards, we can see when we need those prices by.
Yeah. And, and really, I, I mean, I, I imagine some of these, some of these projects will be, you know, month to months worth of, of design work to actually get to the, the estimate. And, and so I, you know, I, I can see that there, there are some that are, you know, okay, that, that costs that much. Not a big deal. But the sports bikes, that, that's going to take quite a bit of, of work to actually have somebody come out and survey, do, do the, the field work and then pop that in and actually start designing that, that whole project. So, and, and really, I mean, if, if the board, I guess when, when we get down the road where the ways and there's a, a design iteration that, that Tyler brings to us and, you know, it may, it may fall on a time when we have a, a meeting scheduled, but not, then, you know, we'll, we'll just go with the special board meeting.
We will. Once we, once we start this momentum, I don't want to, to fall behind on it. So if we might have a few of these, I, I'm pretty sure we're going to have more than a few of these. I'm not expecting Tyler to be here at every one of them or, or Brady by any means, but we can get on Zoom and talk through these. So.
Cool. Probably not.
Anything else? We'll get those dates set up right away as soon as we can to get you back down here.
Sounds good.
To do those walkouts, those, and I'll go from there.
Sure.
All right. Meeting adjourned.